To order. I would, I would wait till 6:30, but that
The roadblock for me.
Clock is never correct, so we're using Apple time. So I called the meeting to order of the Howard's Planning Board for Tuesday, May 23, 2017. And I will mention here that we're recording it, and anybody that wants to record or tape is required by law to notify if you're going to tape it, or whatever means reproduce it, you've got to notify the Chair. Outside of that, we'll start out the first item on the, oh, and we have tonight a recorder. Welcome. I'm sure Allie is perturbed that you're you're here taking your job away.
I'm very excited.
So the first item on the agenda is public hearing PB 2017-13. 525 Camelot LLC, owner and applicant, care of James Stinson Esquire, a property located at 557-563 Route 28, Map 14, Parcel V9. Seeks approval to modify, modify use to site plan review, special permits granted by the planning board on October 25, 16, in CV CH1 and Village Commercial Overlay, VCOD District. The proposal seeks to modify and reconfigure the multi-unit mixed-use structure without change to the footprint and make certain minor pertinent changes to the curbing and sidewalks. The request is pursuant to the code, the Town of Howard's, Section 325-51O9-51M and 55, M through 55, for site plan review, special permit and use special permit, mixed use and village commercial overlay district as set forth in Mass. General Law 40, Section 99. Chapter 40, Section 99. Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Attorney James Stinson. I appear on behalf of the applicant, 525 Camelot LLC. With me is Mr. Sean Riley, who is the project engineer from Coastal Engineering. Also on our team is Mike Ford, who is co-counsel, but he is vacationing in Cape Breton Island now.
Good luck to him.
We didn't want to drag him back. He was up in the hills there. In any case, what we seek is three modifications to special permits. If you recall, two weeks ago, we appeared before you, and we were definitely sure that we needed one modification of a special permit. The board felt that the other two, the 325, the mixed use and the site plan, also it would be a good idea to get a special permit. We agree with that, and that's what we are seeking. I want to emphasize, however, that to the extent we don't modify anything on the October 25, 2016 decision, that remains in full force and effect. So this is just, you know, addressing specific items. It's modification. There was some confusion initially on getting this filed because the town does not have a application which addresses modifications. I'm sure they're going to be working on that in the future. In any case, the special permit that definitely triggers review by this board is the the request under 325, Section 51L, which is the overlay district bylaw, which allows this board to vary dimensional requirements and various other requirements under the bylaw. And we are seeking a increase in the height from 30 to 32 feet. The reason for the increase is to get greater ceiling height in the first floor, which will make it more marketable. Additional space on the second floor as well, so we can have good ceilings there, and also to accommodate lofts. And these are not bedrooms masquerading as lofts. They're bedrooms, period. We submit that under 325, Section 20, it's, it's allowed in a multifamily dwelling, which, which we are, to have up to four stories of habitable space. We're only seeking the, the two. The first floor is devoted to commercial. The second floor would be the the primary floor for the residential use, and the third level, if you want to call it a half-story or whatever, it's allowed as a matter of right, and we suggest that with the septic flow, we're going to have its, you know, adequate as bedrooms. The next special permit is under 325, Section 51M, which is the mixed use of the site. We previously had proposed six commercial units and five residential units. We have changed that to four commercial, four residential. Four up, four down. Bigger units, more marketable. We found that the smaller units, you'd have to put two together to make it a viable commercial space. It also affords us the larger-sized units on the second floor, which make them more marketable as well. In fact, we would like to think they're going to be upscale units with the three bedrooms. As part of this mixed-use change, it's nothing that requires particular approval, but as part of the overall change, we're doing corner patios on the residential units. We're recessing the corners, the front corners of the building, which provides better sightlines for, for traffic entering and leaving the property. We are also reconfiguring the access and egress, a different hallway configuration inside. And the reason for that is to accommodate the elevator, which we think is a significant marketing point. Also, we're going to add some architectural features to the building, which, you know, we'd like to think makes it look better. I know that's subjective, but we submit that it is a nicer-looking building. And I think it would be a welcome addition to Howard's Court. The next change is with the site plan, and that is something that Mr. Riley came up with to make the space more workable, particularly in front of the Cranberry Liquors building. Is that correct, Sean? With curving and sidewalk in that area. He can explain that to you. Going back to the mixed use, footprint of the building is going to remain the same. And we are going to end up with a more compliant structure under the bylaw, in that 41% is devoted to commercial use. Commercial retail use, whereas previous, I mean, the bylaw requires 33%. I think we were just above 33%, but we're 41% now. So we are more compliant under the bylaws.
Thank you. Just to go over the, the building changes that Attorney Stinson spoke about. This is the front elevation that's proposed along Main Street with the, the cutouts, as he spoke of, gives you better sightlines and sight distance for pedestrians that are walking along Main Street and crossing the crosswalks on either side. As you mentioned, the change in elevation, pardon me, we're asking for a two-foot relief in the building height. The view from the street, previously, you could see the railing that was hiding the AC units that were up on the roof and other mechanical units up on the roof. Now that is, the AC units and the mechanical units are tucked in to the roof area, and the roof line comes up and closes off those areas on the side, so it won't be visible from the, from the street. The, as Attorney Stinson spoke of, the elimination of the first floor residential unit was converted to retail space, and the addition of the loft areas for the second-floor residences. The site changes, starting out at the street, we've added a landscape strip along the length of the street. We've also incorporated the two properties to the side, Waystack Realty and Cranberry Liquors. Right now, there's a paved walkway on either side. We're proposing to remove the paved walkway and make it a more formal concrete to coincide with what is proposed in front of our building. We're also proposing to have a more defined access with curbing in front of Cranberry Liquors than was previously proposed. It was proposed to be striped. This would have a more defined approach with a handicap-accessible detection strip and a painted crosswalk. After speaking with both the owners of Cranberry Liquors and Waystack, we were proposing these two small fruit trees out in front of their buildings, looking at it on-site with them. It may impact the view of their, their signs, so we're going to remove those two trees from the proposed plan, but we are going to keep the two trees that are out in front of our proposed building. As I mentioned before, the, the four corners of the building have the the cutouts on the lower level to provide greater sight lines and sight distance for pedestrians walking along Main Street. In the rear of the building, we've relocated the handicap access ramp. It was located over here when the doorway access, there was only a single access over on this side. Now that we've got two access doors straddling this area, we needed to slide the handicap access ramp to the middle of the building. It didn't change the count of the parking on that side. Everything just shifted around. In this area here, we previously had this striped. In order to accommodate the light poles, we've created a landscaped area, so increased the green area here. And we've relocated the two light poles that were positioned in the middle of the parking lot into these, these landscaped areas. Essentially, those are the changes to the site itself. Changes to the parking schedule. With the reduction of the number of units, we've gone from five units to four. We've actually got a reduction in the required number of spaces for the site. We went from 67 down to 66. So the requirement has gone down, so we've come closer to the compliance of the 60, I'm sorry, yeah, to the 62 we have proposed, to the 66 that's required.
Just a note on the parking. The total parking is 62 spaces. Waystack Realty has 10. We have, I believe, 28. And there's 14 with Cranberry Liquors. Cranberry Liquors is going to have the exclusive right to seven spaces, the three spaces next to it, and the four spaces directly behind it. Mr. Waystack has the, the exclusive use of the 10 spaces on his property, up until 5 o'clock, after which he has indicated, you know, that they could be used for whatever purpose. And we have reserved 10 spaces, excuse me, we had reserved 10 spaces figuring two per condominium unit, now going to eight condominium units. It's, I mean, excuse me, four condominium units. There's only eight reserved spaces. So Mr. Waystack and Mr. Delamorti have the right to use our parking. So we have one consolidated parking area that I think the, you know, it, it worked out well, given the way the properties were otherwise situated. And we have easements that are going to address all of the issues regarding the entrance, exit, parking that I've just mentioned, and things of that nature. Also, I wanted to recall for the board that on October 25, some waivers were granted. Front setback is 25 feet. The board granted a waiver to eight feet to keep it in line with the buildings on either side of it and present a nice appearing streetscape. Sideline was, as 20 is required, and we have 17 feet with the existing buildings. And we have the waiver of parking, parking requirements as it was listed in the decision, as may be required. And I think, as Sean indicated, we're pretty close to the, what we require for parking, even without waivers. Back in October, you also asked us, the final thing was, are you okay with your height? We indicated yes. Of course, we're back here now seeking our the best-laid plans often goes dry. When we tried to commit the regulatory drawings, you know, some of them didn't work in certain respects. And that, that's one of the primary reasons we're back here.
Lastly, there was some discussion last time about the septic system. The daily flow changed with the addition of the loft space. The original design flow was 1,300 gallons a day, which fit into the existing sewage disposal system that we did a Title V inspection on. So originally, we were looking to utilize that existing system with a proposed use. With this change of use, the, the demand is higher. It's gone up to 1,520 gallons a day. This system can now no longer accommodate that. Given that fact, we had to install, or we have to propose and design a new sewage disposal system for the site. And given that fact, we discussed with the owner the need to install a new system. So we went through a cost-benefit analysis exercise to determine whether or not it made sense to upsize the system to accommodate some other uses that were allowed within this district, such as a coffee shop, barber shop, ice cream shop, all of which require a much higher demand for septic systems. The lowest demand for a septic system is a retail use. It's only 50 gallons per 1,000 square feet. And it goes up from there. So after several iterations, we came up with a design that would accommodate the most intense use that could possibly go in this building. And let me just be abundantly clear, we're not here asking for the use associated with sizing this system. We are here for approval of the modification to the use for the retail space on the first floor and the residential space on the, the upper floors. We're not asking for a restaurant. We're not asking for an ice cream shop. If we are to propose any of that, we'll be required to come back before this board for a change of use. All of those would have impacts to the parking as well. So we, that being said, we've sized this system to accommodate what would be the most intense use, which would be a restaurant. The, we do have to go to the Board of Health for approval of a system that's over 2,000 gallons a day. The use that we're proposing today, the 1,520 gallons a day, does not require Board of Health approval. So even if the Board of Health does not approve this large system that we're proposing, to accommodate a potential future use, we can put in a septic system by right for the use that we're proposing before you tonight. So I know there was some concern about the Board of Health approving this large system. I'd like to just respond to that, that even if they don't approve the larger system to handle a potential use, we can install with a disposal works construction permit a system that could accommodate the use that we're here before you today. And with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions you may have.
Sure. A few more comments. Part of the problem we have is we don't currently have any uses. We're going to be trying to rent the building as the construction gets started and moves along. And we'll have to adapt to whatever the use is, whether they permit it as a matter of right, or if they require a special permit, then they'd be required to come back to this board. But we don't know what those things are, and there are some things, and Mr. Mr. Riley has mentioned some of them. But the question becomes, we put on our application retail use. So the question is, what is a confectionery? Is that a retail use? Or is that a food-related, requiring a grease trap? A bakery, same thing. There are a lot of uses like this that we have to try to anticipate what it is, but we don't really know, and in fact, we might have to defer to the advice of, of the town planner or this board somewhere down the line, or potential tenants may have to do that as well. There are a lot of uses that are permitted in this area with a special permit, which, you know, we don't have any, any prospective tenants, but you can put a we have no proposal for a car wash. The car wash is allowed by special permit. Now, whether we would ever get it, we don't plan on going for it, but that would require permits from DEP, which we wouldn't get. We don't have plans for educational use now, but that requires a special permit. Funeral home is allowed by special permit. Again, I don't know what the flow requirements are. Ergo, the largest septic system we can get in the ground. Oddly enough, and I, and I found this interesting, as a matter of right, is vending machines as principal use. So I don't know what that is. I'm sure it would be a low flow, but it's just something I found interesting. But I want to state categorically for the record right now, the applicant has no plan for a restaurant. He has no plan for lounge. He has no plan for barroom. I've heard all kinds of rumors since the preliminary application and the inquiry with Board of Health has been made about a large-size system. And there are reasons, he is self-limiting in what his uses can be, and there's a reason for that. But I can tell you, that is not the plan. So again, I know Sean opened it up with questions from you, and I'll do the same thing.
Retail marijuana?
You know, that raises an interesting question. The second floor is going to be residential. So the question, when you draft your condo documents, do we put in, regardless of what the state law may be, is marijuana use allowed? I would suggest it would probably be a no, but because smoking would be a no in most, most buildings now, anyway. But that's a good question. But there's no plan for that.
Allie, you can jump in now.
Okay, thank you. So I think the agents really pretty much summed up what their proposal was. I just wanted to go through the comments from other boards and just point out, specifically a change from the Health Department, which was addressed as well. So basically, the Building Department, Police Department, Fire, Conservation and Engineering had no concerns for the plan. The Fire Department looked very favorably upon the reconfiguration of the curbing that was proposed. So the Health Department had originally stated no concerns for this application, and then they received the inquiry from the applicants and just, or from the agents, and just as the agents had said, it's required, for what they're proposing, for a potential increase of use, it requires an environmental impact review from the Board of Health and a fully compliant septic system. I understand that you aren't proposing this currently with your application. However, on the last page of the plan, design calculations for the septic system, it does say potential future. It says current and then potential future. It's on the last page of the application. And it does talk about, you know, retail space, 48 restaurants, seats, 11 bar seats. So if that's, I understand that you're not proposing that now. If you could just, and it's up to the boards, my recommendation to remove that section from the plans, just so we know that this is what is proposed currently.
No problem.
Okay. And then it's, you know, my recommendation to the board, if you want to continue the hearing until the Board of Health makes a determination, or if the board feels comfortable enough, you could add conditions to the approval that says, basically, we're only approving what's in front of us now. Any other change to the plan, which is what we normally do, has to come in front of us for approval in the future. So it's up to the board how you want to handle that, how you feel comfortable going forward.
Thank you. That pits will be a question or two.
Hey, I just have one question. When we gave our approval back in October, one of the conditions was an interagency agreement or inter-party agreement between the various parties involved in this project. And in our preliminary discussion that we had at our last meeting, you indicated that there needed to be some revisions to that agreement, you know, due to some of the changes that you're proposing. And what we had suggested at that last meeting was that you have those agreements worked into the agreement and signed by the various parties before you came back to us for final approval. Has that occurred?
No, that has not occurred. We have drafts. I have drafts and documents.
Okay. Then I think what I would propose, and again, it's up to the total members of the board, that we continue the hearing until those amendments are finalized.
Right. Well, we understood it was going to be continued anyway because of the septic concerns.
Okay, and that may be a separate reason for continuing it.
We get these documents right.
Yeah. No, and that's fine. I mean, I have no problem with that. But I just think that, you know, as a member of the board, I would rather wait until that, the amendment to that agreement is finalized before we actually vote on this.
Right. The parties to the agreement, both Mr. Delamorti at Cranberry Liquors and, and the Waystack's president and Richard are here this evening. And I have made some overtures regarding minor changes to the easements. In fact, the way I see it, there's only two required, which are simply going to change the, the reference to reserve spaces and and number of spaces they're allowed to use on each property. Because we're right in the middle, so it doesn't affect the two on the outside giving us any, any changes. But yeah, that, that would have to be, I mean, I, I expected that, that request, and we'll comply with that.
Okay. Linda?
I, I agree with Jim. I think we should hold off and continue the hearing until we hear what the Health Department says. Also, I mean, we do want that agreement finalized with all the parties. And removal of that, any, anything from the plans about the restaurant, the lounge, et cetera, on that page. Because in October, we had a plan and we approved it. Then it came back with what were presented as minor adjustments, which were actually kind of major. I'm kind of concerned that six months from now, as we start seeing the uses, we're going to come back with another minor adjustment to plans. And, I mean, at that point, what's the point of having site plan review if we're going to keep changing and keep adjusting significantly? So I would prefer to wait till what the Health Department have to say.
Anyone else? David?
May not reach. As I recall, I can't recall the exact wording, but as I recall, in October, you said that there was definitely not going to be a restaurant.
I'm still, yes.
Now, it sounds like you want to leave your options open in the event somebody comes in and pays you big bucks per square foot for a restaurant, and you don't have anybody else rent it, you might want to take that. Let me finish, Mr. Stinson. Assuming that the, that you get approval for the larger septic system or waste treatment system. Have I got it right, or is it close?
Well, first of all, it's not for sale, so I don't know about, you know, big bucks. You know, I know that
No, I was talking about, you're renting it, right?
Yes.
Per square foot. I'm talking about rental per square foot.
Right, right. That's correct. I represented that there was, there was not going to be a restaurant. And I, I can assure you that if there were, if we reneged on, on an agreement we have made regarding that, I am sure we would be the subject of a specific performance matter to enjoy the use as, as a restaurant. And the, as Mr. Riley has indicated, the uncertainty we have is As Mr. Riley has indicated, the uncertainty we have is... We don't know what the flow requirements are for various particular types of uses. So we don't want to come back. We don't want to come back particularly to the Board of Health. Because if we have to come back to the Board of Health and request changes, and they allow those changes, then we have to tear up the infrastructure, which is going to be very, very, very expensive. So that's why we're going for the bigger system. And the bigger system, when you make application, you have to put the use down. So you put restaurant use. So everybody says, well, okay, now, it looks like a duck, it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck. It's got to be a duck. And there's no getting around that. And I am very concerned about making a representation to this board that certain things are not going to happen, at least not from this particular owner or any entity that may be controlled by him. There's going to be no end runs around anything. And I think that's a rather considerable concession. The neighbors have been very accommodating to us, and without their support and collaboration, we would never be here. So we appreciate that. And, you know, I don't think all of the particulars of that are necessarily a matter for, you know, for public disclosure. But I can assure you that, I mean, I can say for my lifetime that we're not going to be a restaurant there. Now, that could not be that long, but I'm not that old.
Jim?
Yeah. Just to point a clarification. So definitely, if there were to be a restaurant or any change in the use, you would have to come back here for approval for that change?
That's correct, because it would trigger changes in the parking formula. And so this board would then have to approve site plan. And we already have waivers for parking. So we'd be asking for totem pole relief, which...
Yeah. So the approval that this board is... has given and you're asking us to give with the modifications are for the stated uses that you told us back in October. And again, if any change was to be made in those uses, you would have to come back here and get further approval from this board.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. You know, in fact, if I can just read from the development agreement. It says amendment or modification. The provisions of this agreement may be amended or modified by mutual agreement of the parties. However, any subsequent changes from the plan as approved by the planning board and incorporated into its decision must receive subsequent planning board approval unless agreed to in writing by all parties, excepting in such cases where planning board action is mandatory. So it was something we agreed to and prepared to abide by that.
Joe?
I think... I'm just laughing. I think I live closest to this than anybody on the board. Maybe you, Linda.
Around the corner.
Yeah. And I'd like to have another restaurant there to go to. Having said that, I'm being a bit facetious. I agree that we should continue the matter until they resolve their situation before the Health Board. And I understand, although it's described as a restaurant, essentially, your application there is you want to maximize the size of the septic. Is that right?
That is correct. To accommodate uses, a wide range of uses, that the flow demand is much higher than retail.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, you telling us we learned something from the golf course restaurant?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I think so.
If you remember back, just before this board was requisite, eight, 10 years ago, we designed a system for 45,000 gallons a day to accommodate a potential future spa. And 10 years later, we came back for... before you, for the spa use to get that approved. They haven't built it yet, but again, it's one of those situations where it's economy of scale to build it now, so they wouldn't have to rip up the tennis courts. That's why we're here before you with a larger system than was needed.
What we want you to do with that applicant is remind them they're in Howard.
Every time they're here.
Also, in your decision, and this is a further belt and suspenders, I think, under conditions of approval, you require that any changes to the site plan shall be subject to further planning board review. So I understand why we're here on the modification, which I deem to be minor. Well, whether it's minor or not, that required we come back. Also, we had in the... and this is addressing the development agreement. The performance of the obligations of each party to the development agreement shall not be a condition of the special permit, but the development agreement has independent legal significance and is enforceable by the parties there too. So that between the private parties, there is provision for keeping everyone to their agreements under the development agreement.
Good. Anybody else on the board? Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowe from Howard's Port. I represent Mr. and Mrs. Waystack and Mr. Delamorte, who are here this evening. Their support and their consent to this whole project has been predicated upon there not being a restaurant there. So they've asked me to go on the record, along with everybody else this evening, including a petition that they do not want to have a restaurant on that property. And I've spoken with Attorney Stinson today and asked him to give me something in writing prior to the Board of Health hearing from his client that would bind his client as owner and any successes and interests to his client and his client individually, that he would not put a restaurant on the property. I just want to go on record as saying that the abutters are not in favor of a restaurant.
Go ahead, Joe.
Have to ask the question, Bill. Why? Why are they opposed to a restaurant?
The parking flow affecting their businesses, the traffic. We went through all that in October in the hearings leading up to it. So that's... They're adamant about that.
All right. Bearing in mind that the plan as it currently sits essentially cuts the hot stove off completely.
You've approved that plan previously.
I understand.
So as Attorney Stinson said, if a restaurant was to be proposed, they'd have to come back before this board, approach the abutters, back before, perhaps before the Board of Health, but at least before this board. And if my clients had a change of heart, then they'd have to convince us ahead of time that a restaurant would be a good use.
I want to be a fly on the wall when that 60-foot Budweiser truck pulls up on 28 and starts unloading you to the hot stove.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crowe, what was the name of your applicants?
Mr. and Mrs. Waystack, who are seated here this evening.
Thank you.
And Mr. Delamorte, who's the owner of the liquor store. The Waystacks own the real estate building.
I'm glad Mr. Crowe brought this up. I didn't want to disclose what might be considered to be a private agreement between the parties. But that is the agreement. He's approached me. I've agreed to try to draft something up. Of course, I'm going to preface it by, without the assent, without the assent of Mr. and Mrs. Waystack and Mr. Delamorte. Because if things change and they want to change their minds, fine. If they don't, then we have our agreement and we can't do anything.
I just have to say, Mr. Chairman, and I think I'm the senior member of this board, this project, I've had more contacts from the public about this project than any project that I've sat on for these many years I've been on the board. I've received phone calls, people stop me in the street, so...
You've spent so much time with the hot stove.
Well, it could be.
It's the heart of Howard's Port.
Yeah, that's true. But I just want to point out that, you know, people are... people in the town are interested. I think I hear always positive things of people who have contacted me, but I have been contacted by a lot of folks.
Well, you made that statement at the preliminary hearing, and I was afraid to ask the question, good, bad, or indifferent on the context.
No, no, no. I haven't had anybody say it's bad. Just they just... They want to... They're interested on what's going to be there.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Move to continue, Mr. Chairman?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to continue. We're going to continue to agite until after the Board of Health.
So the Board of Health hearing is on... or meeting is on June 13th, and then our next meeting after that is June 27th.
Move to continue to June 27th, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you.
That's fine.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good Memorial Day. There's phone service in Cape Breton, too.
Yeah, try to get him. He's out with the moose.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is PBE 2017-14, Paul and Michelle Vassal. As owners care of Attorney Crowe. Seeks approval of his use special permit for an accessory structure with bedrooms pursuant to the code of the Town of Howard. Section 325-13, Section 325 Attachment 1 Paragraph 1 Line 1B, and Section 325 51 is set forth in Mass. General Law 40A Section 9. The proposal seeks to construct a detached, two-story structure consisting of an all-purpose room, three-bedroom, and three-bedrooms. The property is located at 19 Schoolhouse Road, Map 4, Porcell, T 7A in the RM zoning district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowe from Howard's Port, representing this evening, Paul and Michelle Vassal. Paul is with me this evening. And this, I don't know for certain, but this could be a record for the number of abutters that had to be notified. There were 59 abutters to this property, including every unit, I believe, in the Anchorage condominium. So I have the green cards that have come back. I don't think... Actually, I don't think we had to notify everybody in the timeshare, which would be, I don't know how many, 30 units at one week for every unit? So this is a petition for a detached accessory residential structure with bedrooms, as shown on the building and elevation plans submitted with the application, and as shown on the certified plot plan by Moran Engineering, Our bylaw states that one can have a detached residential building located on the same lot with the principal residential structure to which it is accessory with a special permit. And if it has bedrooms, you have to have a special permit. We don't need any relief from the Board of Appeals, so that means that the planning board is the special permit granting authority under our bylaw. It is our contention, my client's contention, that the proposed use will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The site is an appropriate location for the use. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And adequate and... and adequate and appropriate facilities are provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. The bottom line is that... Our contention is that it... there would be not... there would not be a substantial detriment to the neighborhood if this detached residential accessory structure was allowed by special permit by this board. The petitions also request administrative waivers of any and all commercial or residential requirements of the bylaw that are not applicable to this petition, because there's not a site plan involved, a site plan review or anything of technical nature that you're used to dealing with. I had one before this board, maybe three months ago, 81 Riverside Drive. The board saw fit to grant the special permit. It had been a barn, and it was moved so that it was conforming and converted... Proposed conversion by Dale Nicola of Encore Construction for Mr. and Mrs. Mark Aldrich. And the board granted the special permit for that. This is a similar petition, and we're requesting the board grant a special permit this evening. Thank you.
Okay, first Ellie?
Mr. Chairman, we did receive a letter from an abutter who could not be here tonight. Do you want me to read it into the record?
Please.
Okay. So we own the home at 29 Pleasant Street and our neighbors of 19 Schoolhouse Road. We are concerned that the proposed accessory structure will create additional noise and congestion. In particular, we are concerned that the number of rental guests who will be using the property will effectively be doubled and that the property is liable to become a seven-bedroom party rental with all the noise that that might entail. We are new residents to Howard's Port, but what most attracted us to the village was the peaceful and traditional feel of the neighborhood, which we would like to see maintained. Please note that the existing structure already has four bedrooms, at least as listed on Zillow, Redfin, and elsewhere. Thank you for a consideration of this matter. Sincerely, Bob Colm and Marcia Casey.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just wanted to add one thing. So after review of the application, it does seem to meet all of the requirements of the special permit. And if the board sees fit to grant approval, I would just recommend that a condition be placed on the application that says... or the determination, I'm sorry, that says the accessory structure is not an accessory apartment pursuant to 325-2, word usage and definitions dwelling, single-family with accessory apartment, and shall not contain a kitchen. Just to make that determination, that's not an accessory apartment. It's just a detached structure with bedrooms.
I have a question.
Okay.
Were we supposed to receive architectural plans?
Are they not in here?
I don't...
I don't...
No.
No, nothing.
They were all submitted, Mr. Chairman.
All we got was this.
I have two extra sets, if that's... You do?
I would just like to point out, in the architectural drawings, it does technically say kitchen on it, but there is no stove proposed, and that's what our distinction is, between a kitchen and not a kitchen.
Pretty small distinction.
It is.
It was unfortunate that the architect didn't put that on there. It's not supposed to appear there. But there is no stove.
And that's the definition under the code.
Yes.
That's what we consider, yeah.
Traditionally, that's what the town's always gone by.
I think we might want to rethink that at some point.
That's fine, yes.
Because that them there is a kitchen. May not have a stove, but once you put a microwave in there and a toaster oven, you got a them there kitchen. And that's exactly what that is.
I thought the sink size was another factor, like bar sink.
And it looks like a pretty good size sink. And it's got an island and a refrigerator. We need to rethink that as a board.
And even if it doesn't have that, the plumbing's right next to it.
Yeah.
Could be put in easily.
Put it in the day after we approve it.
Not legally. You have to have a plumbing permit for a stove.
But they could put in a bar sink, but not a full sink, is what I recall.
Put what, Tom?
I thought this came up one time before, in that they're allowed to put a bar sink in, but not a full sink, in order not to be a kitchen deemed a kitchen. It came before the board, like years ago, when Dave Spitz...
It did, okay. That they could put a... I'm sorry.
A bar sink, like a small sink, but not a full-size sink. Otherwise, it would be deemed a kitchen at that point.
Okay.
I assume recall, I don't know.
Mr. Crowe? Is your client the person... Mr. Crowell, is your client the person who put together the project out on 28? There's a...
I have another compound, sir, at 620 Route 28 with a house in there.
Yeah, with a series of houses in there.
No, it's one house with a pool house and then the swimming pool. 620 Route 28. I don't know if we're thinking of the same.
That house is opposite the new construction's been going on all winter, down halfway to Witchmead Harbor. That's the house he's talking about. It's on the opposite side of the street from that.
And I may be wrong, my memory. There is a project, there's a commercial building on the corner, and there's like three or four homes behind it, about... Out on 28.
Where the traveling kitty was?
No, no, no. It's... Somebody's in there selling horse goods now.
Yeah, that was a project that I was a partner in.
Thought so.
I don't have any ownership in that.
Okay, well, you sold all the houses to them?
Yes. Well, my wife and I kept one, and then we sold it because it was a condo situation, and it wasn't conducive to the rentals that we're used to bringing into town.
You and McNally did that, didn't you?
Correct, Mike McNally.
Okay. I comment on it only because they did a hell of a job.
Thank you.
I felt you did.
I agree, no, it's beautiful.
And it was a controversial thing when you did it, but it's very, very nice in there.
Thank you. Okay, Linda.
Can you talk a little bit about the security that is going to be around the pool? While I know this isn't, you know, it's being proposed as not being a nuisance to the neighborhood, a pool, kids, nuisance, attractive nuisance, I think they call it. Because you talk about, it's the summer, it's a parking lot next door to it, lot of traffic. So can you talk a fair amount about what you're going to do to keep that pool secure?
Sure.
Before he does, before he does, there's a pool at the timeshare, like within a couple hundred feet on the other side of the fence.
Part of it's on our property. It's within five feet, but it's part of it's technically on our property. We're not going to do anything about that, but...
And that's been there for many, many years. But go ahead.
I understand, but this is... That's then, this is now.
No, this is a new one, right. So the number-one concern, and I'll go back to 620 Route 28 where the pool was already existing, was even buying that property to... And speaking with Bill and having him draw up the, you know, the legal contracts for the renters, and my insurer, even more importantly, right? There are very strict requirements about owning a pool and what needs to be done legally to make sure that it's childproof and that, you know, people can't go in there and operate the locks on the fences unless you're an adult, right? So the landscapers now, I don't know if you folks recall, but the Apostle family had kind of a post-and-beam fence around that area of the house. Has anyone been over there?
I have.
So there was a post-and-beam fence that the Apostles had installed there, I think just for show, basically, because it's all one property, right? So what we're doing is continuing the stockade fence around the entire property to the driveway. And then on the interior of that fence where the pool is in this picture, there'll be a fence, a chain-link fence that goes from the back of the stockade fence and making a small rectangle around the pool, so that the pool is secured that way legally and up to insurance standards.
Pool... Is the door going to have a lock? Are you going to follow the rest of the rules, like... Because this is effectively... Is this being treated as a public pool because of the rental situation?
No, it's a private pool. It's strictly for the use of this property.
Okay, but it is going to be rented out, the entire property? This is a rental situation, correct?
Absolutely, yep. These are large family reunions, for the most part.
The...
And that's part of the purpose of the detached structure that's being proposed, is to rent to families that need extra bedrooms.
But the... But the owner of the property is not going to live there as a residence?
Correct.
Okay, so the whole thing is a rental?
Correct.
So a chain-link fence? Is there going to be a lock on the door? There going to be keys? How is this going to work?
So a lock on the pool? No, there is not required to be a lock on the pool. Other than a child safety latch.
I'm more concerned about the 15-year-olds hopping over.
Well, again, I'm concerned about that at 620 as well, because it's right on 28, but, you know, we've had very, very good, you know, situation for the years we've had it.
Were you saying you're going to put the stockade fence around it to block it out of sight from the parking lot? Was that what you're saying?
That's the idea. You know, to be candid, my intention is to make this an absolute oasis for the renters, because I got a feeling they're not going to be... You know, other than, people have Google Maps nowadays, but a lot of renters rent sight unseen, technically sight unseen. They can see the pictures and the location, et cetera. But I've had several people say, "It looks like it's next to a parking lot." And I'm like, "Well, I'm going to make it an island oasis, so, you know, and then we'll get all the great reviews." But, you know, this is the first year.
So...
Plus, the convenience to everything is fantastic. I mean, it's a great location.
But I think Linda's concerned, she wants to make sure people in the parking lot can't see the pool. And I know that can be done easily with the right...
Well, that's what all around landscaping and Jim Fisler, who does all my work at... My number-one intention is to make this thing as private as possible. The driveway entrance is not changing because of the way that the parking spaces are in the... The parking spaces on Schoolhouse Road. If you can see the white square leading into my property, that's the only access for cars into the property and the only gated area into the property. So everything else around that property will be fenced in by six-foot stockade, and then we're putting the landscaping, the shrubbery, on the inside of the fence as well. So there'll be trees and bushes as well as the fence. Again, there's a pool right next door to it as well, as you can see. You know, I don't know, I mean, it's kind of a little more accessible just because you can see it, because they just only have chain-link around it. But ours is going to be, you know, solid... Not stockade, yeah, stockade. And then the landscaping on the inside.
Good job.
So do I understand you're going to use this, or you intend to use this, in the same manner as the Camelot? In other words, people who are going to have weddings at Witchmead would rent this out?
Absolutely.
That kind of thing?
Yes. And that's what I do now with all of my other properties in town, my wife and I. The one most similar, and the one that gave us this idea, was 620 Route 28, because it's got the main compound, and then it has the beach pool house, or whatever you want to call it, with the outdoor shower, and the pool is right there. So that's the whole idea on this architecture as well. You can't rent these properties out separately, because families that don't know each other don't intermingle, right? I mean, I rent to one party on a contract, but it's typically grandparents, parents, grandchildren, and they're all there for the week. And it does very well. And like I say to my colleagues in town, my commercial friends in town, it brings a lot of business to them.
I wish I could make you clean up that mess across the parking lot.
I think that's going to happen, sir. I know the people that are involved with that, and they're going to restore that thing. It's going to be beautiful. The schoolhouse you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yep. That's going to... I think it's going to be, look like, just like the Camelot.
Is he still alive, the man that owned it?
He's not, no. He passed away in Florida, and I was in contact with some of the children. I think it's Gilbertson.
Yes, it is.
That's enough.
I got nothing further to say.
Any other questions? Is there anybody in the audience that has a comment? In the case?
I'm prepared to make a... When you close it, I'm prepared to make a motion for findings of fact. Okay. I make a motion that we vote to adopt the following findings of fact. One, the use is consistent with the zoning code and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Two, the site is an appropriate location for such use. Three, the accessory structure will not contain a kitchen and is not an accessory apartment as described in 325-2 of the town bylaw. Word usage and definitions dwelling single-family with accessory apartment. Four, the proposed parking area will provide sufficient off-street parking, which meets the minimum requirements of the town code, and as such, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Move to approve with conditions the use special permit and waivers requested for the attached accessory structure with bedrooms based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, with the above findings and following conditions. One, the accessory structure is not an accessory apartment pursuant to 325-2. Word usage and definitions dwelling single-family with accessory apartment and shall not contain a kitchen. Two, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Three, any changes to the plan shall be subject to further planning board review.
Second. It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion? Sorry, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Hold.
I thought you did that.
No.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved in seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you tomorrow night. We supposedly have a quorum for tomorrow night, so, yes. I will be back.
Don't forget the hour time change in Cape Breton, and it snowed there last night. Next item on the agenda is PB 2017-15. Robert Freitas applicant, determination of adequate access improvements to a townway. Mr. Freitas seeks approval of a plan for improvements to Seth Whitfield Road, Hawksnest Road, a townway, including widening, grading, and graveling of a stretch between Round Cove Road and Queen Anne Road pursuant to the Planning Board's Rules and Regulations, Section 400-9C. Mr. Freitas.
How are you doing?
Fine. If you'll introduce yourselves.
Bob Freitas, Liz Dubuque.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just summarize what you're going to do. How's that?
Just widen a portion of the road from where I stopped, Round Cove Road. Basically, 1,000, 1,200 feet from Round Cove back toward Queen Anne.
Out of curiosity, that's nice of you, but you could do my street, too, and I suppose pay for it.
I know. Technically, the town should do it, but I don't know.
Okay. Ellie?
Okay. So the applicant is proposing to expand Seth Whitfield Road, or Hawksnest, as most commonly known, from an existing nine-foot-wide dirt road to an 18-foot-wide gravel road. The purpose is to eventually create safe and adequate access to his property for potential future development, I imagine. So I'm recommending that the board follow a process that was laid out in 2008, application that was submitted by the applicant. So in this process, the board, the planning board, held a public hearing on the application, heard comments from all relevant agencies, and issued a letter from the Board of Selectmen with their determination. So after review... Sorry, I just want to go back. We did receive a letter after I had sent out the packet to the board members, so I just wanted to read that for you. Thank you. So Chris Nickerson, Maintenance Manager, reviewed the plans submitted by Robert Freitas for the second round of improvements to Seth Whitfield Road, and I would like it to be noted that some work has already been taken place by Mr. Freitas and his subcontractor along the stretch of road prior to permitting. The Highway Department would like to request the right-of-way be surveyed and staked by Mr. Freitas prior to the commencement of any further work to ensure that all activity is taking place within said location. Once the survey is completed, the specifications for construction provided by Robert are satisfactory with this department. The department will also assume maintenance of the portion of Seth Whitfield Road once the work is completed, inspected, and accepted by your board. It was also given to the Town Engineering Department, and they had... They felt that this application was satisfactory as well. So after review of the application, I offer the following comments. The plans do not show a widening of Round Cove Road as requested in the applicant's letter, so this should be limited to what's shown on the submitted plan. And if the applicant proposes to widen Round Cove Road, revised plans should be submitted to show such widening. So just on the plans you submitted, it just shows Hawksnest. And my next question is, when will construction of the road improvements begin, and when will they end?
Well, hopefully shortly after I get a permit, and I guess there was some other form I had to go to the Selectmen for.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't know how long that'll take, but it'll be after that.
And when will it end? Do you know? How long?
It probably wouldn't take more than, well, probably a couple of months, but probably less than that.
Okay. So again, the town administrator has requested that the applicant enter into a license agreement with the Board of Selectmen, and that's also included in your packet. It just basically lays out an agreement between the town and the applicant about what will happen, you know, if the applicant doesn't continue the improvements, you know, things along that nature. I took it from an existing... existing license agreement that we had for another property in town, and I just... I made it more for this application, and it has been sent to the town attorneys for their review as well. But we have not received a response from them back. But it's my recommendation that the applicant go to the Board of Selectmen with this license agreement to get approval. And it's also my recommendation that the Planning Board hold the hearing open until the applicant reaches an agreement with the Board of Selectmen. And then my last comment is, if the Planning Board is satisfied with the application, it's my recommendation that the following conditions of approval be included in to a letter of the Board of Selectmen. So the road layout must be staked prior to the beginning of construction, and it must be, the staking must be verified by the Town Engineers' Office. Then I have when the road construction will begin and end on. That no other work extending beyond the section of Hawksnest presented on the plan was approved at this time, and the work shall be completed to the satisfaction of the Highway Department and the Town Engineer. But at this time, it's my recommendation to the board that you hold open the hearing until an agreement has been reached.
Okay, thank you. Question? Joe?
I read this, and my question is, why does he have to survey it and stake it? I mean, if the town wants it surveyed and staked, they should do it.
Well, it's already been staked, so... And you're right, the town should do it.
It's a townway, I think.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing. I actually wanted to bring up some... Actually, before I forget, I'll be widening it, and then, actually, the gravel might not go down for a while, because I have to get comm electric out there and all that stuff. So it would be widened and flattened, and then I can't actually tell you when it would be gravelled, because the power has to go in.
But is it a townway?
It's a town... It's a townway.
Private way?
And the thing that irritates me is...
No?
No, it's not private, it's public.
Public way?
It's a county way, and it was a highway back in 1850. That's how long it's been a county way. And I have some photos, and this is supposedly a scenic corridor, and it's kind of one of the worst-looking roads in all of Howard. It's bad, parts of it.
You haven't been down all of them?
And this is... This is Round Cove Road, which is also a town road. And the thing that I don't get is, a lot of people go to Hawksnest Pond. I don't know if anyone here goes there, but, I mean, it's busy all the time. And if they're so worried about, you know, adequate access, I mean, I would guess the fire truck, and there's been fires out there, you would think they'd be worried about getting emergency vehicles down to the pond, but apparently, they don't. Like, this is... This is a picture of Round Cove... Like, this is, this is the pictures of Round Cove Road, I just took them this morning, I mean, these are all somewhat different, but this, this is Round Cove Road. Huge, I mean, huge puddles, like, literally three and four feet deep.
Need a fish?
Not that wide.
Isn't Hawksnest technically a state force, is that correct?
Hawksnest is, yeah. It's down on the road.
There's access to it.
And then, for a scenic highway, they dumped, like, what actually I did out there, they picked up some crap on the side of the road on Hawksnest, that's part of the work that happened, and I filled a little bit of the trenches. It didn't really take any trees down, like, that's some of the stuff that's dumped out there. This is the beauty that you see at the beginning of Hawksnest. This used to be a swale when I first put the road in, twenty years ago, this was a swale. Now, all the beautiful people around fill it up with crap. This is another beautiful sight off the side of Hawksnest. This is right on the side of the road.
All the walking trails they're making.
And they go all, now, the town does, they plow the road and they put, once in a great while, they put some T-bays down, but they get like a pile of stuff, like when they flatten the road out, and instead of like picking it up, they just push it off into the woods. And now you've got these, what I consider pretty ugly lumps of rut all over the sides of the road, which I don't think is, I consider a scenic highway. And a lot of that occurred because they never mowed the side of the road for twenty years, and I've been there, this is the first time in twenty years, they did it last winter. This picture isn't the best, but you can see all the little sticks and the trees that got to be like this big, and they cut them down with one of those machines, but they're all still sticking up, you know, like this high up. That's not the best shots, but, you know, the first thousand feet of the road is, it needs work now. Much love over the past twenty years. And this is stuff people are dumping all over the side of the road, again, you know, not exactly the best-looking things I'd wanna see. Now, this is the section I did five years ago, and I actually mowed the grass myself, not all the time, but once in a while. This is the section I did last, and it's the only section that looks good. Now, it could use some more gravel now, because I did this about five years ago. From my house down.
I got you.
I did this about five years ago, and I could use another coating of, they actually, we used two T-bays, because the town likes, because it's easy to grade and stuff, and it compacts real well.
Creates potholes real well, so.
You had a...
That's the section I did five years ago, but even that, town should mow the side so that you don't get these huge, you know, trees growing up, not quite trees, but, you know, stuff like this big, and then they waited too long and they hacked them all down, so I don't know if anyone can pull any weight with the Highway Department to work on the first thousand feet and just pull the crap out of the woods and stuff.
Did the Highway Department make any comment?
They did, that's the DPW letter.
Where was that? Oh, this, this?
Yep.
From Chris Nickerson?
Yep, DPW, yep.
Mr. Chairman, whether it's Mr. Nickerson or his boss, who is the head of the highway, somebody help me.
Lincoln.
Lincoln Hooper.
Yeah. We're gonna continue this, and I think, I think we should have Mr. Hooper here next time. Explain to us what they wanna do or don't wanna do on this road. It's a townway, apparently.
County way.
But if the applicant is willing to do the work, I'm not sure what conversation we would have him, Mr. Hooper.
Because he's in the road business.
He could fix the first thousand feet that I did twenty years ago.
I don't know about that, but, Linda, my point is, he's, he's in charge of the roads in town.
I understand that, but Mr. Hooper also answers to the Town Administrator, so if you're gonna have, if you're gonna be directing the town, the Highway Department to do something, it really goes to the Town Administrator.
The proper channels.
Proper channels here, I mean, you don't have the ability, or we shouldn't have the ability to order a department head to do something.
Oh, I think we should. We've done it before.
And we were probably wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, all probability. Having said that, Jim, Jim, you've got a question?
Well, I have two questions now.
Well, start out with the first.
Let me start with the first to try to clarify what I think is the rationale behind the town wanting the applicant to do the staking and surveying. My, Joe had raised that as an issue. My feeling, you know, and this is just my assumption, was that the town wants to make sure that any work that the applicant does is on the town roadway and not on adjacent private property or the property owned by the state in the park. And therefore, you know, since the applicant is proposing it, you know, it would be the applicant's responsibility to make sure that the work was done only on the town roadway.
I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
But the question is, I mean, aren't we giving him the henhouse with the, with, with the hens if we have him do the, do the survey?
But it says here, the work completed to the satisfaction of the Town Engineer, Town Engineer will review it.
Yeah, they would go out and check it prior.
It's already staked, and this particular section is super easy because it's straight, and there's a bound at each, basically where I'm beginning and ending, so it's pretty simple, not to screw it up, and it's basically perfectly straight, and there's, there's a bound on the highway side, on the state side, and I stake the other side of the road with more stakes, just to make it easier.
Was that, was that surveyed prior to your staking it? Did you have a survey team come in to do the survey?
Well, they did the staking.
They did the staking.
You have a plan, that's a survey plan there.
Okay, that was what I was...
Yeah.
So you, you hired an engineer?
Yeah.
To go out and stake it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then...
Well, it's half done.
Yeah.
Sounds like.
Basically, it's, yeah.
Okay.
And then my, my second question has to go to Joe's question with regard to having, you know, somebody from the DPW or the Town Engineer present when we continue the hearing, and Linda's concerned about the fact that the Planning Board cannot order. The Planning Board may not have the power to order because we are not part of the Town Administration, but we certainly have the power to request. And if the town, and if that request isn't honored, then it would show lack of cooperation between the Town Department and the Planning Board.
I, I think that if I had, if I asked the Town Engineering Department, they would a hundred percent come.
I would imagine that would be the case. By dealing with all the town employees is that they're very cooperative.
Right, yes.
And they're very willing to help in any of these types of discussions.
I wasn't meaning to imply the Town Department Heads wouldn't come if requested to explain something. I was more concerned with the, the comment that I think I heard, which was, and we should find out why he isn't fixing this road. I mean, I know from prior experience, Lincoln Hooper over there has this massive plan of what gets done when and what roads are used most, so I know he's not sitting there twiddling his thumbs.
Oh, of course not.
But I just...
And I didn't mean to infer that at all.
That's the only thing I was commenting on, was the inferring that he should change everything because we say so, that's gonna go through channels.
If I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Fortunately, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen is in attendance here this evening.
Fortunately, you're on board.
Fortunately. My question, Mr. Chairman, is, do you want us to make the request to the Board of Selectmen or to the department head?
I would make the request to have a department head here, is that your question?
Yes.
Through the Town Administrator.
Thank you.
I don't think you need the engineer more than the Highway Department, because the engineers...
No, no, it's the Highway Department who has to be. They'll send whoever they want, I, who cares?
Yeah, the engineer would...
I think, I think Linda's point is, we're going out the town of Intergris, or...
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Rather than, I don't think we have subpoena from, although I've been reading about that with people.
So would you just like the head of DPW to come, or would you as well like the Town Engineer?
Send a request to the, I think I hear you saying.
The Town Administrator.
Send a request to the Town Administrator, and he'll direct whichever of his department heads he thinks should be here.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? David, way down at the end.
Yeah, I've been skimming, skimming the agreement, and I don't see anything in there that, that sets any standards for the work that you're proposing to do. Or is that covered in the permits?
They're just, they're laid out in town anyway, basically, you just put down...
You know, what the depth of the base is, that sort of thing.
It would just run off the side like it does now, and then it's, would be a T-base, which is on the section that we've done.
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, David, I think that was Ally's point where she recommended conditions to include the work shall be completed to the satisfaction of the Highway Department and the Town Engineer.
That's correct. And also, just so you know, in this license agreement, there is a section that has work, and it has Exhibit B, which will be in the back, it's not in there now, but that is the plan that's in front of you, and it does show in the small section right here, if you can see that, that's the detailed cross-section of what the work is proposed to be done. So it shows, proposed gravel road cross-section, it has eighteen feet wide, it shows the pitch to drain, I know it's very small, minimum of four foot, four inches of aggregate or processed stone, so it is there, and it should be in the...
This is fine, if there are, there are other details such as the standards of what is the aggregate, that's what I have.
Oh, okay.
Sure the town has all this.
Yes.
And I'm just assuming that it's part of the permit process or somewhere.
Yeah, basically, they like T-bays, that's what's out there now, which is ground to tar.
I understand.
Compacts real well, and they don't really like ABC, which is ground concrete, that is steel and now and then, and rebar and stuff, so. They use that.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other, sit down, relax. Do we have any other questions?
No other questions.
No other questions, well.
Sorry.
Having said that, you can grab Ally's vote. You might have to read the whole thing.
I thought we were gonna continue it.
We just have to, oh, we don't have to read, we just have to, just continue, okay.
Move to continue.
Two.
June twenty, whatever.
Oh, no, I'd say move to continue until after the Board of Selectmen.
Get it approved now, then, once the Selectmen sign off, it's done? It seems like it wastes a lot of time, come back for, if you approve it, it'd be approved, and then the Town, the Selectmen approve, and it'd be done.
They might change it.
Yeah, it's my recommendation that we keep the hearing open until the Board of Selectmen reach an agreement with the applicant, just so we know that they do reach the agreement, we're not just approving something haphazardly. And again, also, if the board wants to request the Town Administration to have department heads here potentially, we should keep the hearing open to have that as well.
That could be to your advantage to have...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we look forward to seeing you again.
Okay, okay.
So we'll continue it to the June twenty...
Twenty-seventh.
Seventh meeting.
Second.
That should be adequate time. It's been moved and seconded?
Yep.
And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Anybody in dissent? No? Approved. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Nice Memorial Day.
You too. They need a restaurant at that place. Ask me a breakfast place, though, we have enough dinner places.
Dino may return.
Dino's, yeah, he has the best breakfast.
So while we're on the subject about Hawksnests, is there a reason why they don't make it more accessible to the general public? I mean, it is a state force. I know the butters probably don't want anything done there because...
Here's your answer.
I, I...
I mean, it's kinda like a gym in Harwich, like, I don't even go there anymore, because it's just a pain.
Well, this, this will make it more accessible.
Stale.
No question about that.
But I mean, even for the parking, you know, there's like, it's nothing really been done there, it's just kinda dilapidated and just let go, and it's technically a state force, it's sitting there, and that's just...
However... I wouldn't take my dog there.
Well, I'm not, I don't want dogs, I mean, that's different, but I won't take my dog to Hawksnests because all these dogs...
We're deviating too far. So let's see, that would be, that was the public hearing, so I guess we better close the public hearing for that. No, we, we keep it open.
No, we continue, we continue.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is Advisory Opinions, Board of Appeal, new business. New business, any new business? Advisory Opinions for the Board of Appeal, May thirty-first, seventeen. Any comments? Okay. I take it there's no comments, so we don't have to do anything. Business. The salt truck, salt block food truck proposal, five fifty-seven Route twenty-eight. That would be... Yeah. Five twenty-three Camelot, go ahead.
So it seemed, maybe the applicants couldn't make it tonight, but they did submit an application to us, and it will be in front of the board at the June thirteenth meeting as a public hearing, and they did, have proposed to move the truck to the front by the road, which is what I think the board had indicated, and the...
That's the restaurant we're looking for, right?
Yeah, so it'll be in the same location as the restaurant, not the restaurant, as the building, and I think it was to create, you know, the traffic flow that will be there once the building is constructed. So that's the update of where they are, but they have submitted their application and it's set for the June thirteenth meeting, so.
Okay. That'd be relatively interesting once that new proposal's in there, particularly on Tuesday nights. Are there any briefings from the members? Joe?
Capital Overlay is meeting on Tuesday, next Tuesday, and we, of course, made our recommendations to town meeting, but we're meeting next, next Tuesday.
Okay. Any other briefing?
I would just like to introduce to the board, Marie Hickey, she'll be with us from now on, very exciting, she'll be taking minutes. The other thing, too, I just wanted to mention is that I'm hoping to bring back the priorities of the board, because we will, it is updated now, it should be updated now, because we have to discuss recreational marijuana that was passed, so I just wanted to bring it back to the board, I'll bring it back June thirteenth, so we can kind of get, once, since town meeting is over, now we can kind of get working on some of those other priorities.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, Ally, with regard to the priorities, I think the one that I think is probably easiest for us to deal with and could be dealt with quickly is a proposal to sort of revise the Village Overlay District for Harwich Port, you know, with the concept of making that mandatory instead of voluntary. My understanding was that before you arrived, David Spitz had drafted a proposed piece of, you know, revision to the current zoning, which, you know, if you can find that draft, you know, I think all we need to do is circulate this in front of the Planning Board to see whether or not the Planning Board would be in agreement with that, the proposed language changes. Then, if the Planning Board is in agreement with those proposed zoning changes, then we could start the formal process of public hearings and things of that nature in order to look towards approval at the next coming town meeting.
Yep, so, yeah, we can discuss all of this next week when I bring the priorities back, it'd be great.
Okay. Anything else? You're happy you've got a note taker, too?
I, I do not have a note taker, but she will be doing our minutes from, from the videotaped meetings, so, yes, I'm thrilled.
And for anybody...
We can catch up.
And for anybody that, that looked through what Linda sent us, or Ally sent us through Linda.
No, Linda, Linda sent it, I didn't send it.
Linda sent it, okay, sorry.
I wish I could take credit, but...
Go ahead.
Thank you.
It's really a helpful read for anybody that...
If you're on the website, they got a whole bunch of information, too, but that one's not actually supposed to be available for public use, but someone put it on the internet.
I got it from...
I got it, too, I've had it for a while. It's very, severely handy.
It's very nicely done.
It is, it is. Is there anything else to be brought before the board tonight? That being the case?
Moves are adjourned.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Thank you.